Call the meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge and the prayer. If that offends y'all, just excuse yourself from the room till we're done and then come back in, please. Would you please on the pledge?
Surely. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Father God in heaven, we come to you in the mighty name of your son, Jesus, and we're asking you, Lord, to prepare the way for us. We ask, Lord, that you will guide us. We ask for your protection here. Lord, we ask for your infinite wisdom. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. You need to do roll call, please?
Counselor Howard?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Watson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
A court is declared.
Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, approval of the consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from June 5th, 2025, and approval of accounts payable.
So moved, seconded.
Been moved and seconded, approved the consent agenda from the minutes of regular meeting from June 5th? Sorry, how about October?
October.
November, wait, yeah, October.
November.
November.
November 5th, okay, we'll get it. As so amended? Is there any discussion?
You guys didn't look back at the June 5th minutes?
Did, no, did you? Okay. Do you need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agendas and the meetings from November 5th, 2025.
Thank you. Proclaimations, communications, and appointments. We have proclamation from the Restorative Justice Month. Emily, correct?
Roxy.
Roxy.
It should went with our month.
We have an Emily as well, she's just not here tonight. Thank you so much for having us and for hearing us out. November is Restorative Justice Month, and so we appreciate you having us here for this proclamation. We, in the San Luis Valley, have a long 30-year history of implementing restorative justice, and Monavista has been a partner in that for a long time, so we appreciate all the work that has already happened with that in motion, and all the ways that that helps to benefit the community.
Before you start the proclamation, explain the restorative justice just a little bit for everybody, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So restorative justice is a way of helping young people and others as well, but especially with a focus on young people to take accountability for their actions in schools, in the community, sometimes when they've had a ticket that's led to court, take accountability for that, meet with whoever was impacted by their actions, and then make, take steps to make that right, to make repairs in that way. Restorative justice, those who participate in restorative justice process reoffend in the courts at a significantly lower rate than those who don't, so it has been shown to be very effective in our communities. And here in the San Luis Valley, it is implemented both in schools and with justice system partners around the valley, including law enforcement, district attorney's offices, public defender's office, judges, probation, and others to divert youth and adults out of the system, whenever possible to, again, help have those lower recidivism results and that accountability taken.
Very good, thank you.
So then the proclamation we bring tonight states, whereas restorative justice emphasizes taking accountability, repairing harm to victims and community, and is rooted in the five principles of restorative justice of relationship, respect, responsibility, repair, and reintegration; whereas Colorado has strong support for restorative justice with over 40 statutes related to the juvenile and criminal legal system to build comprehensive legal infrastructure for using restorative justice; whereas Center for Restorative Programs is a local organization offering restorative approaches and building capacity in partnership with courts, criminal justice agencies, schools, social service agencies, local law enforcement, and many other community agencies; whereas restorative justice is an effective approach in reducing recidivism; whereas community involvement is critical in addressing the broader impact of crime slash harm and healing; and then it has acknowledging November 31st through 30th, 2025, as Restorative Justice Month.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anybody got questions?
I was just looking at the website, the national website, is it associated with the national?
Our specific organization? There is a National Association for Community and Restorative Justice, NACRJ, and we are a member of that national association.
And it looks like your focus is really in school systems?
So we have a number of different focuses, and here in the valley, we have a team that works specifically with schools and a team that works specifically with court system, and then a team that works with families in other kind of settings as well.
Okay.
Roughly about how many people are here do you guys help out?
Yeah, that's a good question. For our diversion from the courts, we have typically around 200 individuals that come through that from any number of court services around the valley. From schools, it's kind of hard to measure because we, yeah, it's harder to measure those partnerships because a lot of time it's coaching teachers and staff in schools who then implement it to all of the students that they have. And then with our intensive case management and wraparound, I don't know those numbers.
Yeah, I would say they probably see over 200 throughout the whole valley for intensive case management, and your Monavista Police has done some diversions in our lead program that we've been working with. And then wraparound sees probably, again, it's probably about a couple hundred kids and families throughout that they provide resources to, and then more intensive to a smaller number. Yeah, and with our schools, yeah, we do a lot of stuff around truancy, and we do, we train other people, and then sometimes we're actually doing interventions with the students, and then sometimes we're training teachers on just how to handle things in classrooms in ways so that hopefully there's less harm done to other students and property and things like that.
Is this done strictly in the, like, high school, or is it all schools?
It can be all schools, and Monavista, we had staff embedded in the Monavista schools all around for about five years, and they did just wonderful. They're one of our schools that we're really proud. Not only did they continue to keep us funded with their year's funding, but they also kept training other people to actually start doing the work, which is our model, is we want schools to take it on so that we can step back. And so, yeah, they did really well.
How are you guys funded?
I think about 15 to 18 different sources at a time. So we have some state money through our Department of Juvenile Justice, and they call it DCJ, and it flows through our DA. And then we also have different contracts with the schools and with social services, and we have a contract with the city of Almosa. I'm trying to think what I'm missing.
There's various grants and foundations.
Yeah, and then we've been writing grants, like, funding's kind of tough right now, things have been cut, and so we will write the foundations, and we look for state programs that kind of fit, working in either prevention or intervention areas with mostly young people, but we will work with adults too. Because sometimes people don't need to actually go through the criminal justice system to make things right and to repair what they've done, and we can work with adults in that way, too.
Mayor, if I may, Roxy and CRP also is in the municipal court, oftentimes in person, sometimes on the phone. Our current judge is very willing to offer some sort of a deferred sentence, work with youth especially, and CRP, having them right there in person is great. It's where you can just step out of the courtroom, work with these youth, get them set up, get this face-to-face going, get the phone numbers exchanged, and be working with the youth in a better way than just issuing a ticket right away.
So they do, like, the circle program for driving citations for the youth, so they take the youth and work with them if they get a citation for driving. They do underage tickets for the youth, so our judge sends the youth to them. If they get an MPI, which is a minor possession of marijuana or alcohol, they also do mediation for youth who are fighting. So a lot of our cases were stampede, the youth that get in fights at stampede, they see them. So they are a lot of help for our courses for the youth. And that allows our youth to go through them without having to pay fines and do the justice system through the courts. They go through them and learn a lesson.
There may be multiple programs, is that correct? CRP was the name I mentioned, our clerk mentioned the circle program. Are there any other programs' names that I may be missing?
Yeah, so CRP is the overarching agency, and then the circles are one program under CRP, and then the victim offender dialogue is another program under CRP, and then the wraparound that you mentioned is another, and the schools.
Do you have the anger management program too, under you?
So we don't have a specific anger management program. We sometimes get youth for, like, those fights and things that we, what we really do is more talking, like, decision-making, harm and impact and repair. So it's not exactly anger management, but it sometimes achieves a similar outcome with a different pathway.
And some of the wraparound services that we do, they come in and we work with them, and they end up seeing a therapist or a counselor or whatever fits for their family and their child. It's really driven by families.
Anybody else? Lauren, you have any more questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time and for giving us the opportunity.
Discussion and appointment of vacant council seat starting January 8th.
Good evening, counsel. So I wanted to talk to you guys tonight about the vacant council seat that will be coming up. So with the election, we didn't have enough people that ran in the election to fill the vacant council seat, because as you know, Victor and Jason will be leaving us. Mayor Becker was reelected for another four years. So with that being said, Horacio Noronho will be taking a seat, and then we will have a vacancy. So I'd like to hear what you all would like to do. Couple of options is we could put out a notice for letters of intent, and then have those letters be sent in by the next, by November 4th or by the second council meeting in December?
December 4th. You said November 4th.
Sorry, December 4th. My dates are messed up. I know what I'm talking about, really. Or the second council meeting in December, and then this council seat can vote on it and replace Jason or Victor. And/or you can wait until the vacancy is open and then take letters of interest, and do it that way, or you can appoint from the floor. How would you all like to proceed with the vacancy?
So if we got the letters of intent, can we send them? That would give us time to appoint somebody, like, and do interviews with the letters, do an interview?
So if I get the notice out Monday, it'd go into the paper on Wednesday, we could ask for those letters to be back for the next council meeting, so give them two weeks, so we could ask for them to be back to us by December 4th. You all could review them then, and then at the following council meeting, you can pick for that vacancy.
And then maybe this morning?
On January 8th.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
So I was planning on doing things for my family, the reason why I decided not to run. And things have been shifting for the last few months, and I kind of feel like I'm going to be sticking around for a little bit. So I would probably put a letter of intent.
For a little bit or a lot of bit?
For...
For like four years of it?
Probably, and, you know, unless something drastically happens and I need to be gone, or I need to move, or I die. You know, you never know. You never know, man.
I was gonna say, we're all kind of at that same boat.
So anyways, just wanted to let y'all know that.
Anybody else have any thoughts on this?
I'm not opposed to doing their letter of intent.
Yeah.
You know, just put it back out in public. Same thing, and then that gives Victor his to re-up on that, too.
Okay, so do you want to do it? Next one?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just...
Yeah, no, I'm asking everybody, so we can...
Let's get the ball on the roll on it.
Yep, and then we can have our thoughts made. So you got that under control?
Got it.
For December 4th?
Okay, December 4th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we will move on to citizen comments. City Council welcomes scheduled comments. Limit them to three minutes. The council will not take action at this meeting. Margot? Armani?
No, we voted.
He gets to go first.
I had a speech, but I forgot it at home. It was two minutes and 59 seconds. Practice, okay? Anyway, I'm not here to brag about our staff at city, okay, from the head on down through everybody, because anybody I call at the city and ask a question, again, and answer. There's no, well, let me get back to you, there's no... And I appreciate that as a citizen. But tonight, in particular, we're talking about Rob and what they did over on the sidewalk from Dairy Queen to O'Reilly's. Beautiful job there. Well, then his Andrew, Venezuela, and the crew came in and backfilled and did an awesome job. They really did, because I go over that at least four times a day. And they did a really, really good job, and I wanted to acknowledge them because they were very intent on how they did that. Also, we have a good sky-high crew, we have a good chief, I understand. I've been out there at three different events, and they've really taken care of the people, and that needs acknowledged. And the last thing, it's beginning to look a lot like Christmas around town. I don't know if anybody else has noticed that or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Armani.
Your turn.
Yeah, let's see, Paul, listen.
Oh, I don't think I can. Well, good evening, counsel, and I'm going to try not to fall asleep like I did last time and come to the meetings again because I missed. I feel out of the loop of what's happening in town, and I don't like that because I'm a nosy person. I want to know what's going on. But again, I do want to thank you and your crew. They are the most amazing people. Karen and I were cleaning up the flower bed, and we had these, what are we going to do with all this? And who, is it Victor? No, who's the little guy? Yeah, yeah, he said, I'll take it, and he took our boxes. I mean, you guys are just amazing. Just the best people. Say thank you to the police department. I was out raking leaves yesterday, and here comes this police guy, and I'm going, uh-oh, now what? And he stopped at my house to let me know. He says, do you live here alone? I said, yes. And he says, be aware, there's been some robberies. Just be sure, you know, you pay attention, your things are locked up. But he visited, and he wanted to know who was in the neighborhood and stuff, and I really appreciate things like that. It is just wonderful how people respond, and like you said, I call and I get results back. Now, I do have one little issue, since, and it could be because I've missed so much of the council, I probably missed it. But I would like to have a little more feedback on, like, what's happening with the thing out there with water, you know, what you guys... Yeah, that. What's happening with that? And why are we putting concrete in the alleys? I'm just asking, you know, because I want to know. And are we ever going to get any money to help pave some of our really bad streets? You know, are there, I have, I don't know how government works, it's just questions I have. So it would be nice to get a little more, you know, the building across from Dairy Queen is still there. Why? I mean, I was hoping it'd be gone by now, but, you know, I just would like to hear some feedback on things. But all in all, wow, we live in an amazing town with amazing people. Thanks to everybody. And always, people come to me, well, you go tell the council, da-da-da-da, and I said, why don't you come? And I said, they're doing a dang good job. Well, this is, you know how rumors go and stuff, and I'm sorry, you guys are doing a great job, and thank you.
Thank you, Margot, and we'll be getting in touch with you to get some information to you.
I appreciate it, because like I said, it does.
There is an open seat, if you're really going to know what's going on.
Oh, if you're kidding, I can do your work in a million years. Goodness.
Any other citizen comments? Laura, here, thank you, Jean, and Tyler for being here again this evening. Appreciate that very much. It's nice to have the county commissioners come in. Okay, we'll move on to scheduled appearances, and we have one?
Yeah.
Scheduled appearances? No? Resolutions. Ordinances, ordinance, second reading of ordinance 933, amending ordinance 932, and ordinance for the regulation of traffic by the city of Monavista, MTC Code 2025. Who's doing that one?
I'll go address that. That's just the second reading, mayor, for what we did last time. There are two ordinances in there. One brings in a fine on, a lot of times you get 10 to 19 over in the 130,000.
I made a motion to adopt 933, amending ordinance 932, and ordinance for the regulation of traffic in the city of Monavista, MTC Code 2025.
And moving second. Ordinance 933, amending ordinance 932, and ordinance for the regulation of traffic by the city of Monavista, MTC Code 2025. Nina?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor...
Yes.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Aye.
Orderance 933, amending ordinance 932, and ordinance...
Second reading of ordinance 935, amending chapter 7, vehicles and traffic, and non-just maintenance approach. 935, amending chapter 7, vehicles and traffic. In moving second, adopting ordinance 935, amending chapter 7, vehicles and traffic, and non-just maintenance approach on the second reading. Name of the session? Nina?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Orderance 935, amending chapter 7, vehicles and traffic. Therefore, we will be following this in the next 20 minutes.
Question?
Second, final reading.
The next one, the second reading, ordinance 934, and ordinance of the Monavista City Council adopting the 2026 budget for the city of Monavista.
You want to stick your...
Title.
I'll just read the first part, no, it's that, okay. Orderance number 934, annual appropriation ordinance, adopting a budget incorporating something of the city of Monavista, Colorado, with the calendar year of May 1st, 2026, and 2026. Whereas city now just to be blessed with submitted proposed budget to this governing body, whereas on public notice, thanks, same proposed budget is helping with public inspections and set notice advisies. But the proposed budget will be taken into consideration of the regular meeting, we send also the city of Monavista, Colorado. Whereas whatever increase make of the payment in this business, black things, since we are adding to the revenue, though can be expended for exerted or fund balances, but the budget remains in balance, have required by law. Now therefore be in order by the city council, and the city of Monavista, Colorado. The 2026 budget of city of Monavista, that's submitted, and then summarized by fund, is executed in the document.
Motion, bill of due date, 2025. Monavista City Council, adopting the 2026 budget. Second. In moving second. The ordinance 934, and ordinance of the Monavista City Council adopting the 2026 budget for the city of Monavista, on second reading, for the new prescription. Want to note that in the, at the, the young man who is shy, stand, like, like, like. Yeah, how?
Root on young. I don't know what in the body.
What?
You know, conservation, that's, that's, I'm thoughts.
You update on the extent of it, hopefully not the advertising, in the new, so. I actually want to share.
I know, Kiki, just put out, see, you're working on it.
New prescription? Nina?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance 934, and ordinance of the Monavista City Council adopting the 2026 budget of the city of Monavista, second and final reading.
Thanks for working on this so hard, too. Yeah.
All right, contracts, agreements, and leases. RFP 205-P01, Safety Action Plan for Roads and Sidewalks, bid, election awarded.
Everybody's waiting. It's the first. Run away, run away. I thought, I pulled up the packet, and I thought they all have the documents loaded in the packet, but it's not. It's just the attendance part that I got. Just my apologies. Just get the right packet, that's all. Let's be. We just get to the right space. So for the safety, that is SS4A, that grant was provided, or was applied for and awarded quite some time ago. It took a very long time to get it through the Federal Highway Administration, as we changed presidents and everything else. Well, once we finally got it back and got their approval, we did put out an RFP. I was able to get it out, and we actually got a really good push from it. We had nine, no, safety rules for all, it was four, five, sorry, five proposals, which, for me, I'm typically getting around two to three in my department, so I was really excited to see that we were able to get so many. And with that, we, I had the... And with that, we, I had the, myself, somebody from the FUS department, and then as well as Shannon from H R and risk to review it, making sure that that way, everything that we, just kind of looked for some diversity. Usually there's typically like two or three of us that continue to look them over. So we went through and looked at quite a few others to try to get the right information out. Again, I'm going to get to there, it is, it's two hundred and two pages long, that's lovely. My apologies, I thought I had the right one open. Next time I can print it.
On page thirty seven, if that helps you, thank you.
Okay, so all of the proposals that came in met the requirements. We didn't put a whole lot of weight on the price, you can see that when we did select, which is Rock Soul Control, or we recommend, I'm sorry. We don't, we don't select, you guys do do that. Rock Soul Consulting Group was the cheapest, but really their overall presentation was phenomenal. They have a really good public engagement plan. And then they also did a good job of, not only talking about what they, what we've already done, which would be including, so our other studies, they also have in the proposal what comes next. So they'll help us identify funding sources for what comes after the safety action plan. And we can turn it to a separate group, we'd like to, at that point, to have them help write the grants for us as well. So I really liked that, because it shows that not only they're committed to getting the project done and not spending money on things we've already done, such as road conditions and some other studies, but then they're also going to look to continue funding further off. So this, what this will create is a plan for the next however many years, and they will list out our most dangerous and most needed adjustments to the safety streets. That could be additional sidewalk, it could be middle to middle, it could be that we need to address some intersections, it could be a lot of different things, and that's kind of what they'll look at, and then they'll rank them based off of some stakeholder engagement and some other stuff. So if there's stakeholders in this, we're gonna have county representative, PD will be there, fire will be there, work should be there. So we'll have a pre-rope us group, so anyway, that's the proposal, and then I gave you guys a pretty good breakdown of it. If you guys have any questions on that proposal.
So it come, the action plan just goes, looks at the city, it look at all the city, and decide which roads and side, and or sidewalks need work.
Yep.
And make them a safer place to be, whether it's a road or sidewalk.
And so this is the study portion?
It's SS four A. You're not doing any actual work, you're just looking, seeing what's up.
Correct, and, but SS four A has an implementation for their second phase.
Yep.
So then we would reapply for that for whichever one it is. I have some booklets, but we'll see what happens. I gave a nice recommended motion right above the attachments.
And we do have a road plan, and they, and they came back through and kind of regraded the roads for Rob last year, as far as very good, good, or very poor. Go back to dirt. I mean, I mean, they've got a lot of roads that need to be repaired. And to Margot's comment, you know, Margot, we will never have enough sales tax to fix our roads.
Oh, I'm sure of that.
So we'll buy some more Mega Million tickets. And we'll name all the streets after you. But, and so part of the alley project was some of the road funds, was part of our one cent funds as well.
Oh.
And council had voted to do it in concrete instead of asphalt, so that hopefully it preserves it for a much longer period of time, and we don't have to go back and keep addressing it. So, so this short-term pain is going to cause long-term gain. And
I just wanted to put some, put some.
Right. And, and so with DJ's grant that he's talking about, this has more to do with how safe really is that street? So as you're driving down Newcombe, and we added a stop sign over there. Does the, it's a very wide street, so do we need to shrink it down just a little bit in order to make people subconsciously slow down, because they don't feel like they have as much area to drive? And I wouldn't be able to use some counting of, of roads and how many cars travel over this and that. The other main corridor is Sixth Street, and and so those are, Newcombe and Six are the two roundabouts as far as if something was to happen on one sixty or two eighty five. Those are the ways you get around in, in the town. So.
And what Rock Soul will do is take all of the things that we've already got, road conditions, and master road plan, and consolidate all of those things together into an actual action plan, even when fun through either Federal Highway Administration for some of it, or other grants, and also give us some of those. So it's not repeating the work, it's saving all the sense and time and effort. And in addition to their plan, the same grant supplied funds for S V trailer, radar trailers that will flash you going too fast, and they will keep account on those things, that's also included in this grant, as well as a radio road counter. So as Rob and I were discussing today, once we get to those two devices, we plan on continually doing traffic studies until we understand, like, these are our collectors, what are the collectors that go north and south of the city? Well, answer totally, I can tell you what I've seen, but answer totally makes really bad grant writing. So this will give us the, the, the entire grant to be able to put together better future roads. Be able to complete shoot with sidewalks and bike lanes at work, be it just changing the intersection, or we need to stop some, and you're going to spend some. So it was a really good grant, as far as all that goes, and that was why I liked Rock Soul, that's, is they take all of the plans she mentioned, and brings it all into non-single space, where Rob's pretty smutted, I'm, I'm at least happy in telling some days. But we're not experts in traffic control in city, and so if they can put that argument and add it together, and provide it to us in a good, good way, we can, this will not be a plan that just sits on the shelf, it actually will create action items for us.
Okay, I make a motion to award a contract to Rock Soul, to the execution of the safety action, and both of the sidewalks.
And you can second to award RFP twenty twenty five dash P O one to Rock Soul Consulting Group? Is there any more discussion?
Can you add one piece to that, and authorize G G Dennis to sign?
So add it. New discussion? Nina?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve RFP twenty twenty five, eh, dash, P zero one, safety action plan for roads and sidewalks to Rock Soul Consulting Group, and allow for G G Dennis to sign.
Isn't that supposed to be two oh five dash P O one?
Yes.
Twenty five.
Twenty five.
Next.
Yeah, so, request for proposal twenty twenty five P zero two, which is the development of Geo Space Information Services Program. So this one is, again, through a grant that we got through the Bill of Systems, uh, planning capacity grant. So right now we use I M G I S, which is a very functional program, but doesn't have quite the accuracy data, and the import and export has to get out of that. And so what we're looking to move toward is the industry standard, which is R G I S. And so the consultants, we put out the RFP, we got nine proposals back, which is amazing. And some of them, almost all were within the budget, but there was one that was a lot, as you can see on the recommendation box. So again, we didn't go with the cost, because otherwise we would have went with the one that's for forty eight thousand three hundred. Really, we were looking for the end result on this one. Not only do you want a public and private facing space, where the public can go on and click on certain things and get a layer that shows what's the right of way distance, what, a bunch of information they can use for building, that'll give them the envelope, it'll give them a link to their zoning codes and those kinds of things. So it'll give the public good information, but also we'll be able to have a private side where we can look at our water stuff, we'll be able to do sub foot, hopefully, we'll be able to get down to sub foot marking for our utilities and infrastructure. We'll mark all of our data traffic signs and that kind of stuff, so it'll provide some of that. We're also looking at being able to create a layer for heat map for the PD, which would enable them to see where the majority of their calls are. Because, again, and slowly they can say, I spend more time here, but I can actually show where I spend more time, and also it's me up there. So we'll be able to create some of those things, so this grant is the one that will set it up. They will help build it, they will give us some of the licenses and things, and they'll maintain support for first two moves. One of the reasons we liked this particular consultant, the A R G I S Solutions out of Denver, was they had a really good solid step-down plan of build it, train us, and then slowly walk back over a portion of two years. But at the end, we're able to self-support, we'll be able to get some training, we'll be able to know how to input it, create a layer for move layers, export layers, all the things that we need to be able to do, as well as take that data, the raster file, and some other stuff. So this will be a really good program for us, because at the end of it, we should be able to run our own G I S program. This is also one grant out of the vaults right now, that have G I S funds inside of it. So this fund, or this, the way we've written the R, the way we'd like to work the contract, if you guys agree, is we have a base layer of stuff that we want, and then when we, we have G I S money inside the tree grant. So I can pull some of that money, and I can add a hourly rate, which is why we did ask for the hourly rate on all of them. So that that way we can add an extra layer of an extra things as we get money from somewhere else to go ahead and add to that project. So we get a really robust data layer for everything that we're trying to do. I like this one because it's maintainable, it teaches us, and it's also, long run, it'll be a little bit cheaper than what I M G I S is, even though it has some upfront costs. But those upfront costs are mostly covered in the land, by finding capacity grants, as well as the other two brands that I have that have G I S embedded inside. Any questions on the pro, program that we're looking at, or the, I don't know if you guys have time to read the proposal, it's not a short one. Or will be looked at? So we're recommending A R G I S Solutions out of Denver. The contract amount is sixty six thousand eight hundred and nineteen for the initial, and then with the option to add two change orders as we go through and get more funding for other projects. So again, there's a recommended motion above attachments, if you guys don't have any questions, and if you guys are happy with what we recommend.
I'm good. Name, R G I S is.
Sure we need to be.
That was standard. All of them.
I made a motion to award the RFP twenty twenty five P O two, Geo Special Information Service Program Development.
Not Y two K, that's the title, I'm sorry, it's A R G I S.
Two, A R G I S. For sixty six thousand some odd dollars, and I'll change it inside.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the RFP twenty twenty five dash P O two. And was said. Any discussion? My computer died on me, so.
That's how, my mind doesn't show up, it's like, I don't even know what to say.
Is there any more discussion?
No.
You need a?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries, as sent up, motion carries to approve A R G I S Solutions for sixty six thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars with two optional change orders, and have G G Dennis sign.
Sorry for that one, boys, I was looking, how would I state that?
All right, agreement, agreement with the Monovista School District for cooperation in the joint use of the baseball fields.
I believe the agreement is in your packet this evening, we're just asking, it's one field, but we're asking for it in that sense. They demoed our restrooms and that today, and I had to go out and make sure that my assistant wasn't in there. And the guys told me that he put him in there, I had to make sure, because we had to take, put up a floor too, so thank goodness he was over, you know, helping us put up the floor, he probably would have been in there, but we're just asking for, we need, hopefully for one year, we're gonna be using the middle school field for our recreation baseball programs, third, fourth grade, fifth and sixth grade.
How many, how many fields are getting built out there?
Two.
Two of them?
And the city will be up to point one? No, this is for, to use the middle school field that's already out there
Okay.
for this next year, so that we can have our baseball programs. And so it's just the middle school field that will be used, that's already existing, so. But those fields are coming along, we are applying for grants, different grants with those fields. Now, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, right now we probably have enough to do one field, and that we put in for several other grants to hopefully get those fills completed, or started, May of two thousand twenty six. So, and it'll be awesome. We would hope, we will probably hold tournaments every single weekend, or have some rentals off those fills every single weekend, where adults as well as youth, not beyond the playing house field, so we'll look forward to that.
And this is all under Clayton, free range with the school system, they're all totally void?
Yes.
So the bathrooms are torn down, but the fields are still, you, you can't use the fields anymore?
No, we are unable to use the fields anymore, since last year, we haven't used the fields. So, but, and then the bathrooms were torn down today, I didn't even get to make it over there to see it, and I was looking forward to the demo. Right. So.
My motion to approve the agreement with the Monovista School District for the cooperation and joint use of baseball fields. It's been moved in seconded for Monovista School District in the cooperation and joint use of the baseball fields. Move the school district. Any discussion? Nina?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the agreement with the Monovista School District for cooperation in the joint use of the baseball field.
For the Sky High Emergency Operations Center showers and RV park project.
Unfortunately, I'm giving a review, you won't be warning anything tonight, but G G did ask me to give you as an update. So on that project, we are significantly over budget. Between the generator project and now the E O C, the E O C portion that was on the agenda tonight was the portion of the project that included the shower building and the RV spaces. Between the two projects, we are looking close to a million dollar deficit in funding. So G G, DJ, and myself have met this week, we came up with some ideas. Last week I had Alcon, who were the apparent contributors when they did the project, had them go back and give us some more things, DJ and I met today with Alcon to go over some additional things, gave them our total budget, so they could rehash the numbers, and pretty well cut the project to its core, as far as what FEMA, how we advertised the grant, with FEMA, cut all the the outages and everything else that we could, to try to get this project in, into, into budget. So for now, I will open it up for
Um for now, I will open it up for any questions. But just for council to know, we are still trying to do a four stall shower building. And a fourteen space RV park. It'll be a very basic RV park. Each stall will have power. We will have a centralized water hooked up for people to get potable water. And it will also include a super dump station instead of having it set up where each. RV space had their own individual stuff. So we're reducing um as much cost as we can. We did pull out four restroom facilities out of the. The shower room, but it each shower has its own restroom in it as well. So they can still be used, but like I said, we're cutting this back to the exact thing that we advertised with FEMA. So um we're hoping that council, you'll see this with an actual award December eighteenth. Um Alcon would like to get started as soon as weather permits, uh March, spring if we can. So that's, that's kind of our goal, but tonight I don't have any work for you, so. Um and then as Durbin was saying, we did go ahead, um just so council knows. Last year, we shut the water off. About mid-season, so right after Stampede last year, water was completely shut off. To it, we removed the outside fence to the ball fields over there. So the carnival and everything could move over to that backside. Um. We rented a a large excavator to take some care of some affluent issues that we were having over there at the Henderson plant. Um so while we had it, I'm gonna have the had our guys go over and we removed all those tall lights. The the nighttime lights, we took those down and then um I was expecting to tear the building down. On Monday, Mr. Van Gravens so much fun, I came and tear it down, you did. Yeah, so. Everybody doesn't have anything in it. He didn't, so it went bye bye. Three swings of that big old excavator, we rented a four seventy John Deere, so a John Deere. It's got a thirty five foot reach, um sixty two thousand pound machine. So quite, quite five foot bucket, quite a large. So yeah, I took that building down in just a few swings. And so I apologize, but right now I'm still trying to ensure we get this project. Any questions?
Is it, what you said with the FEMA rule? All that's in those.
So, yeah, so, so we've had two big issues. When we first did this, our FEMA representative um told us that we did not have to meet the Buy America, the Baba requirements. Um so the generator package, everything was spect. Without the Buy American and and that was a Gillette generator. Um she left. Things changed with the presidency, came back that the other requirement is now a repast. So we had to go back to the generator that you awarded earlier this year. And we tell them that they had to go back and redo the generator. And provide all aspects of the generator, the generated transfer switch. All connections have to be by America. All the steel, everything has to be by there. That added about a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars to the project. Um we then, when we bid this project, we knew it, so we put those requirements on it first. And our low bid came at two point one. And our total funding is. So you're. Under the gun trying to get this thing into into compliance instead of meeting federal guidelines.
Another issue we're up against is the federal funds have to be spent by me with May of twenty twenty six. So we've sent a letter asking for an extension so we can get this done and um. Our person we're working with seems optimistic, but he's a state employee, so it still has to. Go through and then the fish shut down. We don't know where we are in the process and it's like everyone's. Kind of, we're all scratching our heads. They are, we are. The timing of everything isn't really in sync or law, so we've got a lot of moving parts to make this successful. They've already been out there tearing things up for the generator.
Oh yeah, they're, they're, they came out on site this week. Um they put the condo in, um by the end of the week, they hope to have everything backfilled. And weather dependent, they were going to pour the concrete pad, but. Um we were also scheduled to do a concrete pouring at least half in the alley today, so we're gonna try again tomorrow. But we'll see how that goes.
Which one?
So the East Alley. So if you drive by the East Alley, the the far east side of the alley. Um is all um rebarred and blanketed, um ready to be poured, so um hopefully tomorrow. Seven thirty will be pouring, sixty yards tomorrow. So hopefully, it's the weather. That's supposed to be about today, so we'll see, we'll see. So it's that season, it's, so we'll see. But we'll go from there. So I don't wanna keep any, but any questions on the E O C project? Anything else? Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. And then Margot, since I have you, I intend to have a full report to council with the first meeting in December. Let's see how it's going with our new fit.
I'll be looking for it, thank you.
We'll move on to staff proposals, reports and actions, kids connection.
Good evening, council. Uh. Kids connection is going strong. Kids have a lot of energy, zero. Um by the time the sun goes down, we're all looking at each other like, where are these children's parents? Because we all are ready for bed. They have way more energy than you could imagine. Um but we're seeing about between forty five or forty two and forty seven each day after school, it just kind of depends. Um they just keep coming and you don't really know where they're coming from. Um other than that, that's really like all we have going on. He had a fairly successful concession day. Um out at Sky High for the three on three tournament. Um we're hoping if we collaborate again in the future, we can find a way to really boost that um. That event to get more spectators out there. There just weren't enough spectators to really make it. Really worth it for us. Um other than that, I have put out on Facebook, we're working on a um community support fundraiser. And you should have seen in one of the all emails coming out to the city, um our flyer. Uh for let's light light up Montevista. Um there's already a lot of houses that are lit up, but. We are using this as an additional fundraiser for the year, um trying to encourage some community members support for that. And um it's a twenty dollar entry fee or a donation to Kids Connection. Um and with that, you'll be entered in and put on a list. And on December eleventh, um we will take a group of kiddos out in our minibus and drive around and look at those houses. And have the kids vote on which they think is the most festive. Um and then just drive around and see all the Christmas lights, because Montevista can get lit up pretty well. We're hoping to encourage a lot more houses to light up and just make it really fun for the kids this season. Um so I have that out there and the um prizes are. Going to be three D printed um on our three D printer and the kids are working on those designs. We're gonna see if we have to scale them back a lot because they have some really crazy ideas and I don't know if we have enough time to print what they are hoping to print. Uh but they are working on the prizes for that and although you will be done with them for that and then. We're hoping um once we decide winners, we can maybe do a big night here at council and then present the awards. Let's get pictures for paper. Um so. We would like to light up your house, make twenty dollar donations, um we will come vote on your homes and see if it's moving. I will be entered, but by default I can't win, so. Kind of sad about that, but it'll be okay. Um other than that, next week is Thanksgiving, right? We'll be closed for the week, so staff can kind of get a. Much needed break. Um and then we'll be back for the after school program after that, um then running through. Um Christmas break, we're open a good portion of that and just keep, keep on. Everything we have going. Um we still do currently have one position open, we can't seem to fill it, so. Then people are away, if you know anybody. Other than that, that's all I got for you unless you have questions for me.
Have we seven still work for that fundraiser?
Yeah, you wanna shoot for the seventh?
If that, if that works for you, because that was Saturday, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I will double check, but I think. I think I should be thinking about it.
That's kind of what you said, but I'm gonna make sure so you can get it in the zone.
Yeah, yes. Um is everything gonna be completed? When is that supposed to be completed over golf course?
Can anybody on the clubhouse at golf course?
So they hope to open in February.
Yeah, the like the seventh.
And then you not get it.
Let's find that out.
Okay, yeah, I can send an email to Jake or something, let's see if he has any idea when they're anticipating that. Um just so everyone kind of understands what's happening, we're trying to work on another poker run. Or not poker, return event fundraiser for Kids Connection um in February. Since we have the tables and everything, we figured we would try to get it going and post it at the clubhouse. Um so that people will come out and be supportive of programs.
Last time they did that, was it about eight grand?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah.
We get participation from business owners and the people who want to play uh Texas Hold'em.
Yeah.
It's fun as it is for Kids Connection, it's a lot of fun. Where the jobs tying, you can have a mayor play off or whatever it was you did last.
That would be great. Nice, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anika. Recreation.
Hello again, so. On the recreation side, um we applied for two grants with Laura Foundation, one for our football um program. We need more shoulder pads and newer shoulder pads from what we have for safety reasons, as well as mouth pieces. And we applied for six thousand dollars from Laura and she contacted me today and I had. Need a little bit more information, so hopefully we'll be getting that grant for our football program next year. Um the other uh one that we applied for through Laura was thirty thousand dollars to help out with the. Pickleball and basketball court over at Marsh Park and I have to have that resurfaced. Um and recovered by saying folks did our tennis courts over here hopefully, but of course we'll go out the bid. Um we applied, like I said, for thirty thousand dollars for that, so hopefully that goes through, through the Laura Foundation. Um. We just ended with girls' basketball season and we're also gonna have a tournament this uh this weekend and I've um. The league voted not to have tournaments anymore, um but we're, we were asked to host one since we have two. Uh two courts in the same spot, so um we're gonna host the tournament this weekend for girls' basketball. It's registration and we provide the referees now, but. Uh everyone has to register and each team will pay a certain fee for that, depending upon how much our referees cost us for that. Um right now, we're taking registration by our boys' basketball programs. And we're gonna have a clinic before that starts and that we've also been asked to, and we've been asked since I've been here. To do something for three to five year olds. So we're gonna do something for three to five year olds this year. Uh we're gonna have clinics, where parents are gonna come in and run the clinics and uh just do skills and drills with the kids, so it should be fun. Pray for me on that one, three, five year olds, so you know, we're gonna try to do that uh right before we have our games on Saturday morning. We always end up hosting a game every Saturday, so we're gonna try to do that for like forty five minutes before each game starts on Saturday. Start that at eight because the games start at nine o'clock. And uh this past weekend, we had the uh three on three basketball as well as the. Um cornhole tournament, um both were a lot of fun, we didn't have a dunk tank, sorry about that, get you next year. On that, but what was awesome about that was we had sponsors and I just wanted to list those sponsors. Almost a building supply, Calvary Mon- Montevista uh church, cheap liquors. Corn potatoes, Coors, Drift Away, Garcia's Auto Sales, I Love You Immensely, Cookie Factory. Um J and B Construction Incorporated, Kids Connection, Laura Foundation, Marie McCombs. Um Matthias Concrete Incorporated, Montevista Elks Lodge, Montevista Machine Tool LLC, Polished Edge, Quincy's. Top Value, Valley Meets, Walmart and Win Win Concrete. So the community really got behind us in the events that uh we did according to this sponsorship right here. And of course, there's always that one person that points out something that I left off of here. Uh can you guys figure out what I left off of here? Sponsorships? Of course, I did T-shirts, put all the sponsors on the T-shirts. Gigi, where's the city of Montevista? Oops. So I forgot the city of Montevista, so next year, make sure I put the city of Montevista sponsorship at the very top now. Um we uh we thought it was pretty successfully been and that um three on three basketball went really well, we had eight teams. Uh of guys, three teams of girls, and then we had one full eight team, so we thought it went pretty well. Um they crowd, there was a crowd there uh to watch them play. Unfortunately, they just didn't make it up to the front to the concession stand and that. And then we had one guy who almost drank all of our beer that we had, uh so. Um. So it was pretty successful with that and that, so and that was in coordination with recreation and Sky High and that did that together, so. We had a bull riding event, um picture taking, uh the three on three basketball, the cornball. Um tournament and my wife's still mad at me because all I had to do was land on the board, we would have wanted to go to the championship and so she would have talked me out for it. That's okay, that was a good thing.
It's been nice knowing you, Doug.
Yeah, I know, I know. So. Any questions? Do for recreation?
Does money ever do a coed softball team, like uh slow pitch? Ever do big?
They used to in the fields, but we haven't since I've been here, but it's something that we're looking at doing. And a lot of teams that are playing right now uh up the street, uh said they will come down this way once we get the fields done. And that for a coed, uh do a coed leave, so and then. Uh you need to watch to do a. Um flag football too, so coed flag football. No, not you, Nita. I'm bad, my apologies, my apologies. I just wanted to liven up it, liven it up a little bit now. What's that? So that's it for recreation. Any questions for recreation? Well, thank you.
Are you doing the next one?
Yes, of course I am. I was gonna walk out and come back in, that was DJ's suggestion, you know, but I'll just stay here. So um uh Sky High has uh some events that are coming up, um like I said, they were part of the three on three. Now we co-coordinated that together. Uh a lot of people there asked us if we could do that on a monthly basis and the answer was no. Uh um something that we might be able to do quarterly and that uh new bet like that. Uh but it's fun and I have to have the community come out and present something to the community. And Gigi asked me to talk a little bit about what my vision is and I made it short and sweet. Um of what the vision is that I have for Sky High. Um. If I can get my phone to work here, so what I'm looking for for Sky High and that is a true event center and that one that has. The convention side of it and host lots of conventions and us bringing in conventions and contacting folks to bring conventions here. One of the biggest things that I found out for here regarding conventions and that. I need to show them there is things here to do in Montevista and in the surrounding area. And I, and I think that way we're gonna get quite a few conventions. And in the surrounding area, and that, and I think that way we're gonna get quite a few conventions come here once the hotel's built. Now, but that's just a huge vision and that just to show. That there are things to do in our community, different ones to do, rather than just go back and sit in your hotel, because at most conventions, you know, they're background breakfast, they're background. Uh, other convention centers and that's pretty much what they do, what we need to do is show folks that, hey, there is stuff here to do in the evenings and that. And there's things in places that you can go to do things, um. The, so, uh, true convention center and that with Recreation too, and that being divided a little bit more into that. And I'm not saying throw all of Recreation into there, but we need more Recreation activities in um, at Sky High. And as well as uh, community events like what the wow, um, definitely just did the three on three basketball program that we just did as well as the cornball. We need to involve the community more and have more community events that, one of the biggest things that uh, you know, that came from the community and that um. Was the five dollar charge, and that, so, I need to look at that and say, okay, no charge, but once you get in. And that everything's gonna cost, it's pretty much, we pay for everything, bull riding was free, the um. Pictures were free, just about everything, you gotta pay for the cookies, the concession stands and whatnot, we had a jumpy house in there, forgot about, but. Uh, I thought it was a pretty good event, we often enough, I just gotta find a way to get more community involvement in that, and I think it being free. And that, um. We'll see, that's up. Any questions for, oh, Sky High, we have the um. Uh, Christmas bazaar that's coming up, the first weekend of um, of December as well as um. Uh, the feast or church is also rented for a huge bit, um, seven hundred people is what they're expecting out there for that too. Not that Victoria, to find out what are the names we have out there right now, but I'm sure that we have some other things that are going on out there right now too, so. First of all, I wanna thank GT for showing the confidence in me and that and giving me the opportunity. To do this and that, and I have done it before, I do have a background in this, it uh, cause brings around three community centers. Um, Hillside Community Center, Mel's Park Community Center, Dearville Hills Community Center, that's similar to the convention center out here, now we have lots of conventions, programs. Um, in those, now, so, made me very, very well, now, all the community centers were very, very popular, so. That's all I have. Any questions? You guys tuned in to me, no questions.
I'm gonna save them up, get your feet wet.
I appreciate that.
Letter of don't take.
Don't take them.
Thank you, David.
Planning, DJ, nobody can read.
Oh, dang, dang.
Okay, I actually had it all up this time, I made sure beforehand. So, um, planning's been a little bit busy, uh, planning and development's been really busy recently. Uh, we just acquired a new Americor volunteer, her name is Abby Miles, so she's replacing the old Miles, the new Miles. But her first name's Abby, um, and she, her focus is gonna be slightly different than what uh, previous Americor did. Uh, they were focused on, uh, focused on the recreational economies for rural communities, and she will continue to carry that forward. But we're also focusing a lot on community engagement, um, for everything within the city, uh, we're looking a lot at. The tourism side and then also trying to bring some sense of community to our engagement. And I think by including her into uh, the marketing and strategies with Chamber of Commerce, the Rio Grande County Tourism Board. And those, she'll also build the connection so that when we do have a actual community meeting where we need to do a community engagement for. Either ordinance or whatever it is that we're looking to do, she's gonna help develop some multiple avenues that we can do that, so. In keeping with what he was just saying, like, we have these events, we have the event center, we have these things that are going on, um, but are we getting them out to the right people, so. Uh, my intent, um, and our intent for her is to create that pivot point of information by reaching out to. All the various places and trying to get all of this stuff into one calendar, and then working with those different uh, marketing and information distribution points. To get the information out to the right ones, right, like, not all of them should be advertised by the city. But there is an avenue to advertise all of the events that are going on in the city, there are so many things that happen that we don't know about until. The day is happening, honestly, the three on three basketball tournament was probably the best advertisement I've seen in a while, because I heard it on the radio pretty much every day. I seen flyers for it or talking about it, um, and those are the kind of things that I'd like to try to figure out how, or I'm hoping she can figure out how. To get that for more community events, um, and at the end of her time here. Uh, our intent is to have somebody outside city house involved, become that pivot point. So that it can continue along, somebody who has a passion to kind of build a community and get people involved. So she's just got started, uh, she's been here. Two weeks now, um, very, very happy with it, uh, she graduated with a degree in government, something or another.
National science.
Political science and international affairs, and her intent is to go to college for her Jewish doctor next year. Uh, so she's doing some applications for that. So other than her, um, the last uh, month or so. I worked with multiple departments, um, and basically what we're trying to do is review the nuisance code that we sat in for that work session. And we went through and folded in the IPOC that you guys asked to get folded in. Um, so we folded that in and we went through, we staffed the entire draft, I'm waiting for one more. Um, members feedback, they were six, they couldn't get us back the information. Once we get that draft completely staffed through us, then we'll pass it off for legal review. Once it gets back from that, um, I'll give you guys, or someone will give you guys a presentation where, which will compare and contrast. Current rules, our most prevalent rules, if uh, other draft that was developed outside of staff and then the staff proposal, and then hopefully that will give you guys. An app and to for that emissions code. And planning and zoning reviewed the first two articles of the land development code, um, that doesn't sound like a lot, but that's, that's quite a bit of pages and quite a bit of data. Um, and other than, I think, three items that Seth and I are still gonna get some clarification on, those are ready for final draft. In December, we're gonna go over articles three, four, five, and seven, um, some of those are fairly small, um, but we're gonna go over those with, um. In December to try to get that completed, right now, we're mostly making some minor tweaks, we're making sure all the references are correct, we're making sure that. The additional rules and things that were not in there are updated. In addition to the December meeting, uh, I've got a couple of memories of staff helping me. Uh, go through each of the procedures in Article Six, which is the one that we're not going over in December. And that's to make sure that it does actually flow, if you have one, any kind of permit, it doesn't take a rocket science degree to be able to move from. Applying through an appeal if you have to. Uh, in, in that effort, I have a layman who's actually looking at it too, and they're creating the workflow that shows this is where I went, 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 went to get to the end. Um, to make sure that's not just a, you know, the planner, the city clerk, the, anybody can read it and find out how to do it the right way. Uh, and while we're doing that, we're also gonna make sure that we're creating processes and procedures as well as a desktop SOP. Which will be able to be picked up by anyone to work through those things, there's a lot of things now that are kind of standard that we do. That we end up like, okay, what's the next step for this, what's the next step for that? Um, so by creating a desktop SOP, they don't have to always go back to the coach, figure it out. Uh, and really, that'll also make it easier for when people come into the office, they can get it out and show, hey, here's where our requirements are, these are all the things we need to make the process. Other than that, uh, we're currently, so as you guys know, we, we operate under an intergovernmental agreement with uh. Rio Grande County for our building services and little inspection services, uh, over the last year, they've. Expressed that they're probably gonna terminate that, and then this last month, we did get a notice to terminate from the county administrator. That January first, they'll no longer be providing our building inspection and planning services. Uh, so in an effort to kind of get ahead of that, we were working with some other agencies to see if we could come up with another IGA. Where they could perform the same or similar services, uh, and those efforts all fell through, um, just capacity is a thing. So we issued out an RFP and we're working on developing an internal building department, um, that will fall underneath community developments and planning. Which is a, that's the stereotype of a place for it to exist in municipality, and so. Our hope is that we will issue permits, collect the information, collect all the documents, send off to a third party, uh, for review. Then we'll collect that after we issue the permits, um, and then they will do the inspections, they'll give us copies of all the inspections. And then we'll issue the certificate of completion, the certificate of occupancy, depending upon what it is. Um, so basically, it's kind of the baby steps since you're running our own building department. Uh, I don't believe, and after a healthy review of finances, we don't have enough building to apron it empty. So by doing it by as needed, we can slowly step into the building department, and if we continue to see the growth that we've seen in the last two years. Then potentially in another two years, we may be able to afford an empty, so it's kind of baby steps to set the department. Uh, we're trying to make sure that we're doing it uh, the right way, so we're setting up a good tracking system, I'm uh, working with the finance departments to make sure that. We have separate accounting lines for expenses and revenue on this, because after the first year, we wanna do a health review of. Did we hit neutral, I'm not necessarily looking to make money off my building department, but I don't wanna lose money either, um, so we're trying to make sure that we do a good job with that. So, that's been something that's been kind of eaten up a little bit of time in the department. Uh, development continues to the city, you see construction pretty much anywhere in town that you try to drive. Um, there's some construction going on and it will continue through later, um, the apartment complex is doing dirt work, they're working on some infrastructure connections. Uh, the hotels you guys have seen is tough, they're putting in windows and everything else, so everything's kind of moving along on that. Uh, and then, since you guys approved the GIS and Safe Streets for all action plans, over the next little bit, we'll be getting those contracts. Give you up when the work started, um, and the different devices and things ordered, while we work on the policies and procedure for the building department, to the nuisance code and. And the changes to the land development code. Um, other than that, that's, I got a lot of other things running, but those are the major points that, that you guys should know about, any questions?
Um, to answer Mark's question earlier about that building that's still standing across from. Dairy Queen.
Autozone.
Yeah.
Or yesterday, sorry, um. They're kind of a disaster, uh, so, they were originally gonna do the tear down in July. And then they ran into some issues with the neighbor, and then, so, things kind of waited, and then now all of a sudden, like, hey, we're gonna go and push forward. But their local contractors, because they didn't get their stuff done in a, a good amount of time, they're committed elsewhere, so that's gonna push things back. Now they're having some conversation about potentially trying to breach the highway over the winter. But after a conversation with Rob, I don't see that happening at all, so I'm not really sure how that's gonna play out. Um, they're going to do it, um, their AutoZone rep that was there onsite with their super. He said he was trying to get him to send a punt to springtime, and that, uh. There are other higher ups that want to do that, they are a significant amount of money into this project and they have to serve rep. So, that was kind of the trend at the moment, but it's all there, they are waiting on absolutely nothing from us, we have done everything we have to do.
Yeah, because we've already figured out design and stuff with that common law, everything else that was there.
All that's, now that they just gotta get off the ground and do it themselves.
DJ, before you get, because the last year I don't believe, I was in another league.
Yeah.
Wanna highlight that a little bit?
Absolutely.
You were there.
So the Urban Renewal Authority has, um. A- as you guys probably know, we have four properties, um, that the city owns. Or the U R owns, that they're trying to get under a purchase sale agreement with a Rio Grande Land Community Land Trust. Land Trust, Rio Grande Community Trust, and they're trying to sell, or they're trying to enter that agreement so that they can sell three of the properties. To them, and then they would later develop it as it goes, um, one option is that they would work with the school district, and the school district will build the houses there. The other option is they find other ways to place houses, um, and the intent for the Rio Grande Community Trust is to apply for. A land banking grant to actually purchase the properties, so the purchase sale agreements, which they did pass a resolution to approve. Um, so we do have a current PSA with them, is contingent upon them being granted that money. Although we did add a caveat that if they don't get that grant, they can pursue a separate grant of some sort to continue to do it. So we won't have to enter a new PSA if it decides to go after a different grant, um, so that right now is those three. And the fourth property, there is an individual who had reached out prior to this, that was very interested in purchasing the property, um. And they meet all of the current requirements, uh, and he actually lives next door and is buying it for his daughter who is a nurse. Um, and meets all of the income requirements and all the things, it, it will be a completely legal purchase as far as everything goes, it'll be at the appraised value of everything else. So that's all good, so hopefully, in the next six months, the U R will part with those four properties and they can move on to the next uh, project.
Thank you. And all state too, DJ. All right, City Attorney Report.
I'll jump up with the part one, your two part fourth.
Counsel, thank you, uh, it's my report with reward the last month, basically kind of trying to detail some interactions and working with employees, staff and some committees. Um, bulk of my time really has been sent, stamped with P and D, working with DJ on the development and review of the development. This once again entails, as you know, building regulations, zoning overlays, quite a few subjects going on. We really did make some. Large bites of the apple last week when we met, uh, got along with the way through the proposed code. They did come up with a great plan for next month also, basically everyone's given a section review and have some markup, some comments on beforehand. So definitely moving and progressing, I think they got well over halfway through the code. Up until last month, and we just have kind of a few leaning sections to come up with, and we'll be making a proposal for that new development. Code for these, and counsel to review and approve if they would like to, so. Uh, I've had some dealings with our HR department, um, working on some possible or potential agreements for, um. The search and the hiring of new police officers, just trying to come up with a way to offer some potential incentives. For those individuals looking to hire and retain, um, young officers also, to bring them into the area, will be someone that would be willing to stay here for the long hauls. Um, I have had a little bit of ability to interact with our clerk, there's one agreement we're working on currently, it's actually a contract for a new municipal judge. So just hoping to have some edits made to that contract, um, and get that back to her shortly for her review, like also presentation to that individual. And I maybe should have started with this, but I was able to share and also, actually the city manager. Asked, um, earlier today, um, so it's a third Thursday, I thought you had a conflict, which is one reason you haven't seen me. I have had a standing conflict on a third Thursday every month with another municipality. I do believe that they have moved their standard meeting to the third Wednesday, so I do have availability now on a third Thursday. And I do think that their schedule change will stay, so that's kind of a new bump from my personal schedule. Um, my inbox currently still is full, so there may be some continued. Um, or outstanding requests, be working through that in the next coming weeks, even over. We will be taking some time off for the Thanksgiving, or we will be working in the office for next week during Thanksgiving. Um, there are two more points, I do look forward to discussing our code, and also really its implementation. With our new reappointed municipal court judge. Um, there's some ability to speak with him without crossing any ex parte lines, but developing that relationship, that's a working relationship, is something that I do afford to do. We'll be working with him here in this capacity, um. We do work with him also in district court, and so we do have that relationship also, but it's a little different body in municipal court. Different rules apply, and also just applying different rules to actually different curbs, it's actually different. My last thing is that I just want to really wish all council members and staff, you know, a happy Thanksgiving holiday, a good sleep, if they enjoyed it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
We like, maybe this, we had conversations with the. Mr. Stayer about being municipal judge, just to say yes.
So I did speak with him, he did accept the position, um, I did send a contract though, which is set to review. Um, he will be intermined December fourth, council meeting to accept that contract under you all. And I found I did have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Stayer. Um, Monday, we met for about an hour and a half and discussed the upcoming position that he'll be taking.
Waiting on a contract. And then I did not attend municipal court this last week, but it's my understanding he did observe municipal levels of it.
Okay. I was gonna cover it. DJ pretty well covered the first item up. Grass which was the sale of land. We developed the a uh, contract, a resolution. Proven the contract that they intended us for the sale of those lots for sixty thousand dollars, three lots. Uh, this again is dependent on the buyer getting proposition one, two, three, funding and uh. We'll have to see how that turns out. I think the way that they operate is that. Uh, their funder wants to see a contract that's they have and uh, so they got to tend to that to them. And if it works out, uh, fine. If it doesn't, then we go back to it. I would do this whole thing. So that's been done. Well, municipal court, uh, one of the more interesting municipal courts we've done. We had uh, forty nine cases. I think we ended up yesterday with only two or three. Still wanting a trial. We had almost a complete. Uh, pleas of guilty on everything uh, yesterday. Um. We have uh, illegal possession of alcohol and marijuana and drug paraphernalia, uh, a lot of shoplifting and uh, theft cases. Um. But probably most important thing that we're concerned is in drug house cases. We have four uh, pleas of guilty by Randy Glover, three thirty three Madison. Um, possession of a drug house um. And running drug house, uh, a uh, accumulation of weeds and trash. It's always nice to have that in there because we can get down to uh, trying to put leans on that the issue with the super lean um. Situation if you got weeds and trash. So um, drug paraphernalia, junk, all of that. Uh, and um. Glover uh, was out of there. He's uh, on his way back to Mississippi. That the title of that place is still in his parents' name, who has ceased. I think uh. You know, probably you're going to end up having to do procedures and this. On both of all of these drug houses, you'll have to consider how much you want that property. Those are policy considerations for you. Thus, uh, I think the ways that we can. We haven't done one of these cases before, but we've actually done the transfer of property into the city's name on the basis of drug house. I've done, you know, um, condemnation, so condemnation for, um, that's a different procedure. Uh, here we're talking, looking at what uh, leans are on there and what we can prove. We're also talking about. Uh, the uh, taxes that are due on the property and a variety of things like that. So. We'll start have to, we'll, we'll have to start some serious discussions. I mean. How far you want to go and how, how much you want that property and is it going to be uh, something you want to put park on or something like that? So. Um, anyhow, and then uh, we had uh, four guilty pleas by Arnaldo. Arnaldo Valdez, uh, which is at six fifty seven Jackson Street. Um, and uh. He is out of there and so uh. You know, these considerations involve public works to the, what you're going to do to remove all this stuff, um. Uh, tear down the, the structures, et cetera. Uh, we had uh. Dan Hicks, uh, at seven seventy one Washington Street, possession of drug house and trash, all guilty pleas. Um. So um, part of this too. Uh, Judge Stanger was in attendance at the latter part of when we were going through all the drug house parts. Uh, at the court and uh. We agreed to sit down and talk about all of these, the M T C, the nuisances, uh, the uh. Procedures uh, that he wants to implement for the end of the year. Um. And uh. When and uh, what circumstances he will uh, implement jail as a uh. As a remedy uh, or punishment on defendants uh. And that involves, involve also some policy proceedings by you because we're going to have to pay. The cost of uh, putting those people in jail and having to pay defense attorneys to represent them. So. This is stuff that we really got to think about um, when we're taking direction on this. Um. So, um. Seth and I have talked, uh, and going, going back to July when we were talking to you then. About how we would work uh, the departmentship and so forth. Um. Uh, we had represented to you that Seth would be the primary contact with uh. The uh, city manager and the city planner. So we're trying to get back to that now. Uh, and now we concentrate on municipal court. We would back each other up. Uh, he's back in full swing pretty much now. He's. Just about there with the end of treatments and so forth. Uh, so we think that this would uh. Um, help uh, uh, make a smooth uh, working relationship uh, with staff. Um, it takes two attorneys anymore. Actually, the workload has gone in line. And so that's something we can give you is basically a. Uh, a two for one. Um, he is already working in that uh, environment. Of uh, contacts uh, with uh, city manager and with DJ. So it seems to be some progress. It's working out pretty good. And uh, we hope that it's going to look well in the future. Um. I think that's probably the. Without all I can. Would you have any questions? Basically. Thank you, Gene.
Happy Thanksgiving for me too.
City manager report.
Okay, since I've missed the last couple of meetings on stuff, I've got lots of little tidbits to share with you this evening. Um, one, I want to do thank GD for doing a good job with the budget and we heard last week. Uh, Shannon, we weren't, we weren't overly. Real with our insurance provider for health insurance and so Shannon sent them. A long email. We are very specific. Here's what's going on. This is what we're unhappy with. And they came back with a vengeance, wanting to keep our business and our insurance. Increase for this year is only three percent. Remark, remarking, yes, amazing, remarkable. So. Fourteen. So that was, that was really good news. I want to congratulate Durbin for accepting the position. Um. We had, we took his, his employees out to lunch today and um, he's very excited about. What he thinks we can do out there. There needs to be some changes and Durbin's the guy that's going to get it done. So thanks, Durbin. Since I'm going around the room. Buddy, I'm doing too. No. And Rob, he has just been so busy with, with some of the challenges he's had the last couple of months. He's back at it full throttle and trying to make sure that we've got all of the. These projects under, under our gun and um. Filling out lots of reimbursements for grants. So we'll get those, those funds back in before the people. DJ, Steph, he was under control with Abby and community development, good things. Um, it's been kind of fun. No, it's been really fun to have. Other businesses actually call and say, what is it that we can do? Or how can you possibly help us if we did such and such? And so he's the man on the ground to take care of those sorts of things. And Anika, the big sister, yeah, and Anika, she's always busy, but we're hoping that um. You know, one of the reasons we went with asking for a donation for the, for the lights is that. Just because you put a string of lights outside doesn't mean that you necessarily want to be judged. So we thought, let's turn this into a fundraiser. Let's see if we can get more enthusiasm around it. And those that really want to be judged will be judged. And maybe we can make a little bit of money. For our kids connection, but I want to thank you because she's a heck of a time yet, um. People, the employees. Um, I attended the neighborhood watch last night and some of the things that. DJ was working on the save routes. We had a couple, we had a largest group of tenants that I have seen, it was like fifteen. And they were some neighbors, some of your neighbors, Jason, with some songs about the speed on the Anderson. We had some things about people lack of lighting on the day. So now we decided to move. And that's one thing that they are working, and you're helping Rob is. We, this is all done through a grant through the. And. She got a grant to help get some solar lights. And so we're going to be putting some solar lights and see why the end of those were. You know, we'll have some people that are upset to see the visiting thing. I think it may help with some of the mischief, stupidness that's going on. We have the police department, we fought a lot, we have the. The little break-ins that are happening right now. When you're experiencing this, when we, you know, frustrated. Yeah, you know, that's the police department's frustrated. A lot of the negative comments on Facebook are coming from people that do value their estate. It's not all security cameras. And so they've got it pretty specifically, either going out there and working on some lights. And so we're hoping that there is some goodness. I don't know if you saw any views this way. But Douglas County, they had a, a. There was a person that purchased a. Spray paint. That. Middle gaps. We saw the person that got the grant for that. And rented this, I understand the windows. I had, um. We met with Representative Martinus this morning and we think we got a rundown. Uh, he's looking at this twenty twenty six lights lady session and. You know, primarily a lot of his bills are focused on. How it's going to help us this. This, the, the conversation with the. He's always eager to, to visit, we all be interested. Also met with Skip, the administrator for Hoover County. We need you guys to cheer for the council. It's time for our M O V to come to be. Signed with the county on behalf of tourism dollars for this treaty. We understand what Skip wants to do. We don't necessarily agree with it. And the lion's share of the money goes to staff work. So you, so we proceed. Mom, this is twenty percent. The idea behind the marketing advice is how many people do you have in jail instead of paying and driving. South Fort Henson might as well be. So as an example, moving in the. So that there, the odd names, there is. And so they want to, so you know, the skip, we need ink whether from. The south port can burn that. And I talked through some of this. You, you might consume it. Southport is a town. Southport communities, Delmore, Puma Vista, there are business. Infrastructure. They, they. They don't have a safety. I mean, how many of those baking people coming to this to. Either shopping, or to. And so I, I think my opinion is that a healthier, healthy approach to this. Is better than just giving the biggest hope for the families itself. Because Delmore and Monbusford, the unit of CA, the. Leader of hotel slash R B slash um, short term rental is. That's out there. One more of which I can spit in, for the mind is with each other. So anyway, they want to have a group meeting where it was by Zoom, so we could set up a Zoom. By either December, the eleventh through the fifteenth, we're inviting county council of Southport. You know, county council towards Delmore, in the morning and so that would be all. And here what the big pioneers, we presented what Skip's recommendations, how we, what issues. How these powers. How these counties, I guess. So you guys are available with December 11th, but they feel they get the, they get much. Much. Like on six, like in January. Seven. So SCIF's.
Yeah. I would invite. Or we would have. Be careful.
Well, just don't worry, it's an audio, you just said. Okay. You don't care. Victor.
Athlete. I can probably do either, either day.
Not inside at all.
Okay.
Wait, have you always been, wait, please? You know, doing great, I'm going to.
I'll pass that on tomorrow.
Well, if you, you do it for your class today. If you keep, if you're asking on this. But anyway, you know, it's the. Because of faith, all this day, it's usually. What do you think? Well, I think it seems to be that a place, place I don't want to be. We, we're waiting. It's a great, you know, you were considering, okay. That you know, so you have a lot of. You're talking about five, then you have until the common solution, you know. We've, we've left sleeping with.
Well, and I think that the city markets, then needs to be more strategic in who we're putting on the tourism. We get three selections and we better send it out. And I, this is my, but the board itself is too heavily worried by those new hotel rooms. Instead of looking at the minimums that bring gas to those hotels and things. And so I think in some ways, and I think that's the one I'm meaning, is they're a little self-centered. We need to, to draw our, we think of places that need to be, we're marketing our county, not just so in the virtual. Maybe even solidarity. Uh, let's see. Adam State, I'm not a bum. Went, attended a meeting of the least ago with President's candor. They have visited Alamosa as now put into their strategic plan. You think of Alamosa as the literature is in one and of course, almost only has Bluetooth and Bluetooth to market. They put in their strategic plan to turn part of all the student center moving to a banquet learning, so it's sort of free to pardon these people. You have other conferences. Because they don't believe that they should always have to come and do in Montegoast with the Sky High, meaning they should also be doing this. And, and I I freaked out. So I'm giving a lot of calls. I need to figure out where, where are the players on this and how does this work out? And just like Montegoast, we've put things in our strategic plan that we wish in the future. And that's what's going to be, you know, for them to build a $20 million renovation of the Speed Union. It's like, you know, when you have the, hopefully the next team. So I just think that it's something, we can't stop it from happening. But when I was built, was a collaboration in the purpose of calling it a regional office. We need all six counties putting into the. And also to the things, and City of Alamosa, they don't get anything. It's something you keep, keep in the back of your mind, you know, because. We got another grant. The Stamos Valley Development Resources Group still has some funding. They have 50/50 match grants. And we've brought some, this year, let the budget finish here. And so we were able to get matching, right, we can get 60/50 tables. But probably. Chatting, but, but we won't either be able to be purpose, some of those technical things that we got with other parts. Or the main idea is to eliminate the maintenance that it takes because every teenager, one or two of the last guys, probably sand down, rain cans, replace wood benches on our picking tables. And so we're trying to get something creative with the wooden ones that you would put out initially. We draw them up for community options, we have one of those, we have one of those, that'd be maybe for me. So there are a few of those things. You want to dump them?
Was something you, you bought to, 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 you want to have?
We're going to. No, it's just the man now is. It's the same, they want to be knowledge, everything else, they're simply, you need to be to learn.
Excellent. During the course of your, you can think, I just.
I imagine they're all relative.
We spend a lot of time to. Good thought, you can send them to the back of the guy we. Be dealing with. It's all we want. Not doing that. It's available, I'm not. That's, we're using this. We don't have to. And we want to.
So another bill unfunded by the high state. That we're going to have to comply with, we're applying, we're applying Jane. State has decided to meet at a state-like, we saw. Your community, especially for communities where their trash haulers do not offer inside your. So there's a place to be in truth this week. And now the program, why they stuck municipalities and municipalities, you know. But the purpose of it is for each can of top that you buy, it'll have an extra few cents tagged on to the price. It's been paid by the consumers. That couple of cents then is collected and refunded back to the haulers. We're having to haul it, store it, get it to the disciples, send it, ship it, whatever they're going to do. And so it's kind of a cumbersome process, I think. And we're going to have to learn a lot more and, and do it because basically the city has to collect the money and we have to pass the money back on to the, the trash people. And this is allowing communities and the individuals to have curbside service that have not had it in the past. So we have to go in and say, okay, this neighborhood is fine. Three of them want the, the service. We've got three in Montegoast wasting each unit. So it's just.
This is actually an inside down place. And I know that most time it's, they're already having recycling, but then all they're all out for the same landfill.
So you said that that's a fallacy. Um, I live out in the country and so I use MDS. We do, they do give us a separate thing to put in the cycle.
And MDS didn't see.
Are they in the city too?
I have them, so.
Okay.
MDS and waste man, we're going to be on the soonest, boys have those that actually have. He was embracing them, like, yeah, they were pretty expensive. They're all in, in Anderson. I've got, I've got.
Okay. And Gigi, I also have a gentleman who wants to review, who wants to get a franchise agreement with the city. So he wants to make this, he wants to make a review on that. So he tells you, you can have a recycle as well. So the big thing that I was able to do was, was invited to go to Washington DC, the Lord Foundation. They did this survey. They paid Gallup polling to be the survey to try and figure out what makes, what motivates any of us from wanting to either step into the leadership or to donate our time or start an event, like three on three and get involved in these sorts of things. And so Lor is also in Questa, New Mexico and in Land O'Leone. And so they had two people from Lander that work in nonprofits. The gentleman from Questa was with the superintendent, the school district down there. And when we meet. And so Questa is like a population of 1,600, Montegoast is 4,000, Lander's like 7,000. And so we're able to, they had all of these different funders in them. And so we were able to share with them kind of the challenges of being a small rural community with limited people resources that can apply for grants. You know, they, they get these great ideas and think that everyone will then fall all over because it's for rural communities and then rural communities don't apply for them. And so we were able to talk about the challenges of, the lack of we need so many of us wearing multiple hats. And so it's, it's a time issue, having to get all of this stuff done. And then they make the reporting piece of it so difficult. And we were able to share and, you know, some of these big leagues, they're not going to be able to do this, but the Lord Foundation, we get an idea, we call it that. Yvette writes it up and submits it. She then sends us the money and she asks that we follow up with the report once they put them. And then she's, she's doing all the behind the scenes paperwork for everything. And it just makes, it's the cumbersome and fear out of it. I think that some of my, my friends, you know, we've got a buddy in Fleming, Colorado, brings outside of school. Its population is like 150. They don't apply for grants because they've got a staff of four people that does everything. So you know, if, if they really want to help rural communities, they've got to take the the, you know, the time factor into play and how they do it. So I, I brought back three of these hard copy. If any of you want to see it, I've also got it online, if anybody wants to see it. It will be, it's now available to the public if anybody wants to read it and and this picture that they have on the front page is out. So that's meaningful to. What's this called? I'm not the. Okay, finally, the holiday party with the employees is going to be December the 17th. You all are invited. Attorneys are invited. You'll be out at Sky High, November 11th, 30 to 1. We're going to be catering. Giving a catering march from Baldos and let's make sure that one of us knows so we can get a count of that.
One was a time one.
So thank you. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving and thanks to the participants that have listened.
Thank you, Gigi. Great. We'll go to council committee, city commissioner and council report. Jason. Sorry, somebody said, starting to look a lot like Christmas. You know, it's getting cold out there. My dogs don't like to be outside, you know, entering my dogs in. So remember, it's cold for you, it's cold for them. You know, some of us don't like as much, you know, dogs do. That's what I was. I'm good. Bye. I'm going to open it up to me.
You have two executive sessions, so let's not.
Yeah.
Let's rein it in there, Dan.
See something, say something. Thank you for all the participants of the Neighborhood Watch. Seen some little punk last night that had something and I right, why did he even follow him for a while? He hit me, so he was like, you know, good. One thing is, Christmas time's coming. You've got the holiday stuff happening on, in December, December 6th. A lot of parade lights and lighting in the tree. Light in the tree. And you bring the lift in, let me know. And then for the folks that don't know, there are some new businesses in downtown. And we as people of the community in the city, just at least make your presence known, walk in and say hi. So I know there's a lot of holiday stuff in that place because I've already been to Plinburg. To run in the businesses and so. We have to, what time is the thing nights?
The break is at six.
Yes, that's six.
At the five, it's at five fifteen.
We have Santa on Main Street. Our chocolate cookies. And the holiday, was ours going on that weekend, right? It starts on Thursday, Friday, Friday and Saturday. Well, I, we will take a five minute or two minute break and we will continue our meeting with executive session. So I guess I could say that. Great, a two minute break, guys.